Welcome to the April 18th, 2018 St. Charles County Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. At this time, I would request that everyone please turn off or mute all your electronic devices, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Conditional use permit application heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Commission will then make a recommendation on the applications which will be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision. These applications will be scheduled for introduction at the Monday, May 14th, 2018, County Council Meeting. Public comment regarding conditional use permit applications will be taken both tonight and at the Council Meeting on Monday, May 14th, 2018. Public comment on these applications will not be taken at any meeting of the County Council held thereafter.
June, June.
Oh, did I say June?
No, it's May.
May.
We've already passed that.
May, May 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I think they, I think it should be June 11.
June 11?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just reading off the script.
Turn back the hands of time for that money. It would be an amazing thing to revisit.
Yeah. Okay, let me start over. Conditional use permit applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Commission will then make a recommendation on the applications which will be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision. These applications will be scheduled for introduction at the May-June 11th, 2018, County Council Meeting. Public comment regarding conditional use applications will be taken both tonight and at the County Council Meeting on June, Monday, June 11th, 2018. Public comment on these applications will not be taken at any meeting of the County Council held thereafter. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the evening's public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unifying Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, the year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 Future Land Use Plan Map. Let's see, we have a quorum. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
On tonight's agenda, we have a rezoning request in preliminary plat for Shadow Pines, 1112 Bryan Road, a public hearing for a conditional use permit at 3707 Veterans Memorial Parkway, and a conditional use permit request at 3695 Highway D and 3703 Highway D. On the agenda that was posted, item number 11, closed meeting session, that, there's no, will be no closed meeting session this evening. Okay. First up is a rezoning request in preliminary plat for Shadow Pines, located 1112 Bryan Road, the application RZ 18-06 and PRE 18-03. Owners, Hillman Bryan Road LLC, developers, Ancom Construction. Engineers, Vaults Incorporated. Current zoning is R1B, single-family residential district, 20,000 square foot minimum lot size, requested zoning R3A, medium distance density residential district. Area consists of 5.75 acres, number of proposed lots, 14, located on the east side of Bryan Road, approximately 200 feet north of Pascal Court, 1112 Bryan Road, adjoining the city of O'Fallon, located in Council District 4. Staff.
All right, as we mentioned, this property is currently zoned R1B, which is a 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. It is one of the last unincorporated pieces along Bryan Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone to R3A. Originally, they suggested R2 because these are attached homes. However, when we reviewed the plat, we found that the setback could not be met, which requires a 25-foot setback on each parcel. There are individual lots on this preliminary plat, and the R3A zoning allows a developer to cluster the homes and still meet the 25 setback from the overall development. So consequently, we recommended that the change be made to R3A. The important thing with this plat, though, it is still a low-density residential development. With, with a low-density residential allowing up to four units per acre, that would have allowed up to 23 units. However, the developer is proposing 14 lots and 14 attached homes on those lots. Approximately one-half of the plat, if you look at that, is still going to remain common ground with walking trail. There is some wetlands in that area, so it will remain no use down there, and just for the, for the property owners to use. The, the growth area in that, in that area, it is close to Interstate 70, so again, the R3A development fits in with this area. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. With the plat, if you've noticed in the updated agenda packet, there is a variance request because the proposed street for this subdivision, Shadow Pines is the proposed name, is located within 300 feet of, I believe it's Pascal Court, to the south of this subdivision. There is no other location that they can place the entrance, and this is the farthest that they can place, place the entrance, but consequently, they do have to ask for that variance. With that variance request, the plat and the rezoning both would go to County Council for a vote.
Any questions of staff?
Yeah, twofold. O'Fallon's been very aggressive in annexing different property as well as Wentzville. I'm just curious, all the area around it is O'Fallon, and as you indicated, it's in the City of O'Fallon's development plan. Why didn't they annex this property, or did they try and not succeed, or just curious?
Well, I would feel that the applicant can probably explain this better, but there was a, a first attempt with the City of O'Fallon. It didn't really have so much to do with this particular parcel, but it had more to do with another parcel that was added on to this that caused it to be voted down. So it stayed within the unincorporated county. I'm sure they can answer more questions about, about that situation.
You did mention that it's less than 300 feet. I guess that we, something we can ask exactly, but, you know, do you know about how many feet it is?
I, Robert, do you know how many feet?
It's, it's more than 200, but obviously less than 300. I can get you the exact, exact number. I can tell you, I've spoken several times with the Development Review Staff, including two engineers and one of our engineer, newer engineers, just previously worked for MoDOT as an engineer, looking at things exactly like this. And they both said that they have no problem with this request, and that the placement of this road is in the, exactly the right spot for what they have to work with, in that the, although the nearest road, the nearest other street leading into Bryan Road is less than 300 feet, they consider it kind of a technical variance, and they're, they said they're both fine with it.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern was there, the speeds that the cars would be going, the, you know, you're probably talking about cars going 60 or 65 feet a second there at that. So, I mean, it's, it's something, it would be nice to know what the, what the amount was.
Okay, let me see if I can get you that number quickly.
There's 28, 23 units would be allowed in this development, but they're only going to do 14?
That's correct.
Is there any possibility of them adding more units in a, in a future? Into their?
If they did, they would have to come back with a new preliminary plat, and, for instance, and they could plat it as a, as plat number two of Shadow Pines.
But they would be, they would be okay to do that, though, if they got it, the plats approved, right? I mean, they can decide to put nine more units in there?
No, they, they would have to come back to you for, for a vote.
Okay.
Any other questions, staff? Applicant, come forward. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, under the, in these proceedings, under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Drew Weber with the Hamilton Weber Law Firm. My address is 200 North Third Street here in St. Charles, 63301. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Ancom Construction. Excuse me. And I have a, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I have a short presentation for you. As staff said, Ancom Construction is proposing to rezone this property to R3A, and to have preliminary plat approval for 14 townhomes on this property. The subdivision will be known as Shadow Pines, and I have some pictures, some areas in the plat to kind of show you, to give you a good idea of why there won't be 23 units on this parcel. In a nutshell, the reason is, the eastern half of the parcel is not easily usable to construct houses on because of existing creeks. There's actually two creeks that converge near the property, and just elevation changes. So the western portion of the property is where the townhomes will be located, and then the eastern portion will be common ground, some walkways and park area as well. As I think a lot of people know, townhome developments and duplexes are becoming more popular. There's a desire among people, especially those of the baby boomer generation, to downsize but still have independent living, and to have enough living area to be happy, but not have 3,000 square feet and a half acre lawn to take care of. So we think this will meet that growing need in this area. Shadow Pines is in a convenient location. There's easy access to Highway 70, and there's a golf course nearby, Heaven Sent Bakeries across the street, so we think it's a good location, and that this will be attractive, desirable development. So here's, here's an aerial of where the property is located. And so I want to call your attention to a few things. This is a predominantly residential area, as you can see. To the south, there's some manufactured and mobile homes. To the northeast and northwest, there are some single-family residences. If you go a little farther north, there's some apartment complexes. And then, kind of to the northeast and directly east of the, excuse me, to the northwest and directly west of the parcel, there's some light commercial. There is an existing building on the property that will be demolished, and there's a driveway that already exists that provides access from Bryan Road to this property. The driveway is in approximately the same location that the main road, Shadow Valley Court, will be on this property. And you can also see that this is a pretty heavily wooded property, especially over the eastern portion. And after the development of Shadow Pines, there will still be approximately 60% of the existing trees will remain, and again, mostly in that eastern area. We've highlighted here the creeks for you that kind of converge on the property, and so that, those creeks are kind of where this eastern area that I'm talking about begins. And then the creeks drain out to the golf course that's to the east of the property. Here's a color version of the preliminary plat. With respect to the variance that staff talked about, the design criteria for street construction adopted by St. Charles County requires that there be 300 feet between two residential streets that abut a collector's street. And so Pascal Court is directly south of this property, and there is approximately 240 feet between the northernmost point of Pascal Court and what would be the southernmost point of Shadow Valley Court. And as you can see on this plat, we can't move Shadow Valley Court any farther to the north. The cul-de-sac, the northernmost point of the cul-de-sac is basically on the property line, so this is the best we can do. Otherwise, the property would not be usable. There's no other access to any public roads. In fact, as I said, there is a driveway in approximately the same location that currently exists, so we are just going to obviously expand that area, but basically use the same entrance route that is currently used on the property. You'll see here that the 14 dwelling units are in seven different duplex buildings that are all to the south of Shadow Valley Court. There is a detention area that's to the east of those townhomes, and then there would be a sidewalk along Shadow Valley Court that then connects to an asphalt parkway that will take you across the creek, up to a little park area, and then there will be mulch trails that go back through the woods in that area. All of that will be maintained by the Homeowners Association of that community, as will the outdoor maintenance and lawn maintenance and those kind of things for this community. This is an excerpt from the plat showing the typical lots. The minimum square footage that we'll have in this development will be 5,000 square feet, which is more than what the code requires. The lots are 40 feet wide, there's a 20-foot front yard setback, and the rear of the buildings is, meets the 25-foot rear yard setback requirement. Because these are duplexes, there's obviously a zero lot line setback in the middle of the building, but then the external boundaries of each building are six feet wide from the property lines, so in effect, you'd have 12 feet between each duplex building. And then again, there's a sidewalk along Shadow Valley Court out the front of these duplexes that'll provide access to, to the walkways, and then again, to the trails on the eastern portion of the property. These are the tentative concepts for the homes. Again, these are very tentative, so I'm not sure that the applicant is going to construct exactly these or something similar, but this is the basic concept. So we're not talking 3,000 square foot buildings, because again, the idea is for people who are looking into downsizing, but still living independently, and likely two-car garages. So this will be a nice community. It'll be, again, convenient and attractive community. So we ask that Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Alderman, or to the County Council, sorry. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I also brought Dave Vols with Volz Engineering, he's the engineer on the project, and so he can answer engineering questions probably better than I can.
Yeah, would I ask the staff, just curious, with the aggressive nature of O'Fallon annexing property, and it seems like to be a little island, did they ever try to get this project through O'Fallon and then was rejected? What's the history behind that? Very curious, because normally, that thing would be gobbled up in O'Fallon.
So let me take you back to the aerial picture, and that'll kind of help explain this a little bit. So there was a proposal to annex into O'Fallon. And if you can see what I'll call the central, there's a little central parcel above the 1112 Bryan Road parcel. And so that is currently in the City of O'Fallon. And so Ancom Construction was going to buy this 1112 Bryan Road, and then that parcel, and then rezone both of them to this type of zoning, and then annex this portion into the city. Well, the City of O'Fallon has a policy that they do not want to zone away any of their commercial property. And so that north-central portion is currently zoned commercial, and so the city was unwilling to zone that to residential. So because of that, the city denied the rezoning, and then the applicant drops that northern parcel off of this, and is now just proceeding with this parcel.
Just curious, what kind of price point are you going to have for these?
They're not, they're not really sure yet. I mean, it's, it's going to be, I think, likely in the low 200s, just given the likely size of these kind of townhomes, but they haven't narrowed it down exactly yet.
I notice on the plans, just curious, this has, has O'Fallon Missouri zip code. Is that still part of St. Charles County, though? But it's an O'Fallon mailing address or official?
I believe that's correct. I mean, I believe the O'Fallon mailing code is correct.
I live in the county, and I have an O'Fallon. 63366. Very common.
That post office. So, this may be a question for the engineer, but the lots, or the property drops up very quickly to the east of Bryan. What kind of provisions are going to be done with the street and the site improvements, sightlines to tie it into Bryan?
I think I will have to defer to Dave Vols on that.
Okay, let me swear, you in, sir?
Sure.
You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Go ahead.
So your question, could you?
Well, the lot, the, the property drops up substantially. Again, I'm visualizing the sightlines as people are driving there. It's going to be different if it's coming at this angle versus this angle.
Right, so the property falls off as you come off Bryan Road right now.
Right, so what's happening with the elevations?
Well, the street, as you go down, it's, it's obviously going to go down, but, but we're going to go down at about a 7%, and then, and then it'll flatten out as you get down to the bottom, but we have done a street profile of it, and, and I think it's around a 7% that you go down. And there'll be a, there'll be a vertical curve there, so when you come off of Bryan Road, it'll, it'll gradually convert into the 7%, so, but.
Okay, and so are you going to have to bring some filtered in on that frame?
I don't think so. I think, I think the site, we haven't really done a balance on it yet, but, but I'm hoping that the site balances. Because we do have areas that we're going to be taking dirt out of, the detention basin and area to the west, or to the north, but I'm hoping that the site balances. And usually sites like this, too, that are, that are villa-type sites, you end out with a lot of dirt coming out of the foundations as well, so.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Drew, getting back to the plot of ground that's to the north that you were talking about, that's in the City of O'Fallon, how is that zoned currently? What is, what's O'Fallon zoning on that?
So that property to the north is currently zoned commercial. And so when that was part of this?
General commercial for retail, or?
Oh, I don't recall exactly the commercial designation. I think a retail, because that area has several retail uses, but I don't recall the exact designation.
Okay. The, what kind of separation, I mean, it'll be on, obviously on the other side of the road, but, and they got a strip of, of common ground shown there. Is that vegetated now, or what, or is there trees there? Is there a berm there? What's? My concern is always the separation between residential and commercial. I mean, that, that's always where we, especially on the council level, where we, we tend to get conflict, so.
Right, so, so you're talking about between the street and then the commercial to the north, is that correct? If you go over here, so there is a strip, there's going to be a strip of just common area that'll lie between the street and the commercial property to the north.
I'm having a hard time from this. Is that 20 feet, 30 feet, 40? I'm trying, I'm having a hard time from this map here, the.
All right, so, so from the north property line to the right-of-way, that's about a 30-foot strip. And from the north property line to the front of those units is about 100 feet. So you have 30 feet to the, to the right-of-way, and then you have the, obviously, the 50-foot right-of-way, and then the 20-foot front yard setback, so you end out with about a 100 feet from the front.
From a topography standpoint, are they on the same level? I mean, I see hills going this way.
It's, it'll be, it'll be falling as you go to the south, so it's slightly lower.
Right.
Right.
As you go to the south, it's slightly lower?
Yeah, the south is lower, right.
Right.
But, you know, being, being that it's a single-lot of street, the front of those units are going to be 100 feet from the property line to the commercial piece to the north.
And what's going to be in that common ground?
Well, I don't really have a landscape plan, but I'm sure we're going to be planning some landscaping in there.
Okay.
But I don't, I didn't really draw a landscaping plan at this point.
I, I think that's something that's going to be important, to get separation between the commercial and the residential.
Sure, in fact, previously, and we didn't draw it on this plan, but previously, we actually had a fence between the, between the two sites, a site-proof fence, and I can tell you, we're most likely going to do that. Maybe not all the way to the east property line, because soon as you get to the creek, you know, then it's, then it would be not necessary, but I'm sure we could put a fence there along that north property.
Robert, at what point does that come into, into play? I mean, I'd like to see, see that, make sure that that happens. So is that something that gets approved at, at your level, or where, where does the site plan actually get approved?
Well, the requirements for the buffer separation that, that you're referring to, the obligation, if this were in the county, the obligation would be on the commercial property to put in that buffer when they built or develop a commercial.
Right.
Now, if they choose to do this on the residential property, they'd be free to do so, and they could show it, for instance, on the.
Free to do so or required to do so? Two different things.
They would be free to do so, yeah, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be required. The requirement is actually on like the commercial or industrial.
But we don't have any control over the commercial. Do you know what O'Fallon's requirements are?
I don't.
On commercial development abutting our residential?
I don't, offhand.
Okay. All right.
I have an engineering question. We had a letter from Fort Zumwalt School District regarding the diameter of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
Will it be sufficient for a school bus to come and turn?
So that actually, that letter is not real clear, and I actually called the doctor to, to clarify that previously. He's, what he's basically saying there is either that cul-de-sac, in order for service to be provided up the street, that cul-de-sac would have to meet that requirement for a bus turnaround, but he's okay with actually the kids walking down and being picked up at Bryan Road. So basically, what that letter is saying is, if you want him, if you want the bus to come down that street, then it would have to be a larger radius. Since it's not a larger radius, he's actually okay with the, in fact, I drive that street all the time, and that's where the kids are picked up now, along that, along Bryan Road, so.
What amount of emergency vehicles, such as ambulances, fire trucks?
So it does meet the, the requirements of the county for, for that. Just the school bus turnaround needs to be, needs to be bigger.
Okay. And I have a question for Mr. Weber. The common ground that lies to, I guess for this, to the right, the, the back portion of the property, will that be deeded to the Homeowners Association?
Correct, yes. And the Homeowners Association will have the responsibility to upkeep it and maintain it, along with the trails and the park area, or the playground area.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? You have anything further, sir?
I, I wanted to actually address the creeks that are to the east as well, if you wanted me to, because I know that that's a concern, and it, previously, I'd met with some of the residents in there, and that was a concern of the, because I know that that creek has water. It's not FEMA floodplain, but it is a creek, so it, so it does have water in it, and it does rise. So we do have a detention basin there, and that detention basin is sized, obviously, to handle large storms and small storms, so I can tell you that that's what the point, all the water from our development will go through the detention basin before it goes into the creek, so the goal is for no rise to, to take place in the creek, so.
So is the base elevation of that lots 13 and 14 out of floodplain?
Yes, yeah.
How much free board is there, you know?
There's a lot. I mean, that, that falls down quite a bit between there and the creek, so, so that, and we are, we have the 25-foot setback from the top of the bank of the, of the creek as well, so.
Okay.
And the detention basin's not in the floodplain as well. In fact, it's not FEMA floodplain, but the detention basin is still above the floodplain of the creek.
Gotcha.
So, and I know that that was a concern previously, so I just wanted to address it.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not?
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding this application? We'd ask, ask you sort of, remember to fill out a speaker's card.
I did.
Thank you very much. Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Robert Lollamandere. I live at number four, Petrotti Lane, which just, it doesn't quite border this land. On the north side, it borders a commercial. just, it doesn't quite border this land. On the north side, it borders a commercial land that this gentleman's been talking about, and I don't know where this 100 feet is that he's talking about, between the commercial land and this land, but my biggest concern is the sewers. When they first put the sewers in, it would back up into my house until they put a check valve in it, which now don't back up in the house, but when it rains real hard, and the check valve closes, I can't use my sewer, but that's neither here nor there. But with this property, this driveway or the road they're talking about, that inclines like that, and I'd like to see these gentlemen get out on that road at 7:30 in the morning, or like 4:30 in the evening. It's almost impossible to get on the Bryant Road, and this is just gonna make it worse. But, I mean, that's neither here nor there, but I think there needs to be more study done on that road, coming up on, you know, Bryant Road, especially at the angle. He said it's like 7 percent, but I think it's more like 45 percent angle, but, so, but that's just something that should be taken into consideration. And our Riz Little Fallon, like you said, was gonna put another, I think they had 23 units going into this, on the, they had another eight or nine units going on the north side of this road that they got in here, that he had up there, but I guess they didn't wanna take this plot that's commercial and put other houses or whatever was on it. So, that's the reason they knocked that out, I guess, as he said. But, like I say, my only concern, or biggest concern, is if that sewer line is big enough to handle this many more units, but that's not your problem. But, and I think you should really, you know, do some consideration about that road that's gonna come up in the, on the Bryant Road, 'cause it's almost impossible to get, our road comes on the Bryant Road, and it's flat, and it's right across from, I think it's Bryant Valley, and, you know, it's just to the north of this project, and it's almost impossible to get out on the Bryant Road, you know, at the peak rush hour, so, but anyway, that's just food for thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please raise your right hand. You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. My mailing address is P.O. Box 1535, O'Fallon. This was very controversial and very, brought up a lot of issues at the O'Fallon City Council. I fought this issue and defeated the rezoning of the commercial portion along Bryant Road because it should remain commercial. We need to have a balance in our county, and the city of O'Fallon, we need to have a balance of commercial to pay for residential. It costs approximately with water, sewer, traffic, road maintenance, concrete slabs, drainage, other utilities that the city offers. It's about $10,000 for every 10,000 feet. So, to put all residential and not have the commercial along, I don't know if somebody can bring back up the map if they can in the back, but I'd like to point out that I'm highly opposed to the rezoning of the Bryant Road portion, if that's part of this or not. It was kinda unclear on the staff report. The frontage along Bryant Road shall remain commercial C2. Originally, a few months ago, this was approved as an annexation to the city of O'Fallon. It was approved by the O'Fallon City Council, and then the proponents, Hillman Development, asked it to be de-annexed. So, the city council approximately two or three weeks ago rescinded their ordinance, and it reverted back to unincorporated portion. It's unclear which portions are in the city of O'Fallon and which portions are not. There are some flooding issues, as was described by the gentleman before me. I'd like to have the commission take notice of the public record and the public meeting minutes and the video that's on ofallonmo.com, and you go to departments, you go to Planning and Zoning Commission, and you could see the proceedings that went through the planning and zoning process, and also two hearings at the city council. But I'd like the commission and staff to take notice of these meeting minutes and the video, to see some of the issues that were brought up by property owners that are not here tonight. The comprehend, the future balance, we need to have commercial to pay for residential, as I spoke about. The comprehensive, comprehensive plan of the county calls for this frontage along Bryant Road to be commercial, and I'd like to see it remain commercial. We have to have smart and responsible growth. I'm going to recommend to the O'Fallon City Council, in compliance with state statute, that they pass a resolution to oppose this rezoning, and ask that a supermajority approval be approved by the, the county council, which is in the state regulations and state statute, which would be rezoning within one mile of a municipal border. The owners of Turtle Creek Development appeared before the planning and zoning in the O'Fallon City Council, and they wanted to see a fence at the end of the, the roadway, the map still is not up. If somebody in the back could put up the map, so I could point out a couple things, I sure would appreciate it. I don't know how that happens, Robert, do you know?
Usually if you just ask them to.
Okay, I, I did before, so I don't know why it didn't come up, but... Hopefully, the map will come up, but the Turtle Creek developer wants to see a fence at the end of the prop, of the end of the roadway to prevent trespassing, to use the golf course at Turtle Creek, and also there's, they want assurances that there's ponds and there's a liability, the kids or grandchildren may live in these development and might have access to the ponds for liability issues and to prevent drowning issues not being supervised by adults. So, right here, is there a pointer with the red dot or something?
You can take the microphone with you if you want.
Yeah, you can take this microphone, on the stand.
This one, okay. Turn it on.
Hello? It's kinda tall, but the portion along Bryant Road, which would be to the west, is what I'm opposed to. I think that that should remain commercial, and then the part over here would be Turtle Creek Golf Course, and there's a pond right in this area, I believe, and the developers appeared before the O'Fallon Planning and Zoning Commission in the last two months, and also the O'Fallon City Council, wanting a fence to prohibit any of the property owners from accessing the golf course and having access to the water features.
Can I ask you a question?
No, sir, he, he has the floor.
And then also, what is of concern is the city of O'Fallon requirements are quite different from the counties, and I think state statute and Mr. Hazelwood could speak to that, but when you abut a municipality, I believe the developers required, especially with the buffer areas and the buffer required, setback requirements, would be obligated to meet both the city and the county regulations. And then also, I wanted to talk about the school district, it came up, and from the O'Fallon Fire Protection District, which also wasn't discussed, I believe the chairman brought it up, but I believe there was a letter from Dr. Debray that they were opposing the radius, because they weren't building it big enough to adequately turn around a bus within that cul-de-sac radius, and I believe the fire chief, Mr. Vineyard, Chief Vineyard, also opposed this development because their fire apparatus, including the ladder truck, which would come from Station Four, located across on Bryant Road, wouldn't have ample opportunity to turn around in the cul-de-sac, and that was of concern. And then the other thing is the buffer issues between commercial and residential. If I read the state law correctly, and you should check with your counsel, Mr. Hazelwood, but I believe the developer would be required to meet landscaping, buffer requirements, and setbacks of both the city and the county. So, I'm sorry it didn't come to O'Fallon, it was de-annexed, but I still am highly opposed to the rezoning, because I believe strongly in commercial growth to pay and support our residential development, and if I can entertain any questions, I'll be more than happy. Yes, sir?
Yeah. When I started, I was very curious with the O'Fallon, this was like Little Island Way wasn't annexed. So, what you said, three weeks ago, approximately, this was part of O'Fallon, and then they de-annexed it.
What happened was, because they didn't get the rezoning on the commercial, the developer asked the city council to rescind their decision a month ago, and I believe it was two city council meetings ago, to rescind that annexation. So, they annexed the property along Bryant Road, I believe it was 1.34 acres possibly, that was annexed, and it was all frontage on Bryant Road, and then because they didn't get that approved, and the rezoning is residential, it was highly contested, and the city council, I believe the vote was two to eight, and that's what crushed the deal in the city of O'Fallon.
Okay, if this developed, could O'Fallon turn around and then annex the property?
Shh. It, right now, there's nobody that lives on the property, so you'd have to have a in-city election and an out-of-city election, so nobody would vote on the out-of-city, but the entire city would vote, and if it was developed and residential would go into portions of this property, then those residents would have to petition the city of O'Fallon to annex, and then it'd have to be put on the ballot citywide.
And the other thing, which, Mr. Ellis, question about the radius turning, and you're saying the fire department was not, they didn't think that was, the radius was adequate for fire trucks, or?
I had seen some correspondence from the Fire Marshal Morrison, from the O'Fallon Fire Protection District, and it's my understanding, through David Woods, the Director of Planning and Community Development, that there were some problems with the turning of radius of fire apparatus having access to this development. It wasn't built to the proper specifications to turn around ladder trucks, engines, and from what I understand, Dr. Debray and his transportation director had the same situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Deanoff?
Thank you, members, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else here care to speak regarding this application? Applicant want to come back?
I, I'd like to address some of the questions, 'cause I think there's some confusion. A couple things. This, this whole property, 1112 Bryant Road, is currently unincorporated and has always been unincorporated, and it's currently zoned R1B. No portion of this property is or was commercial. The commercial portion lied to the north, which is in the city of O'Fallon. So, the annexation was only with respect to 1112 Bryant Road, and then once the rezoning, which included the two parcels, once that was not approved by O'Fallon, then the annexation petition was withdrawn by our client, and then I believe the city also rescinded its annexation. But it was a voluntary annexation that the client withdrew, so the city's rescission was, I guess, kinda belt and suspenders, if you will. The, so again, no commercial property is being rezoned here. That was the portion in O'Fallon, and that was not rezoned, and that's not part of this proposal. And with respect to the comments about opposition from Dr. Debray or the fire chief, again, Dr. Debray personally spoke with Dave Volz and said, the school district's only point was, i-if the cul-de-sac is not wider, then school buses cannot turn around down there, but they're fine with picking students up at the front of the subdivision. And with respect to the fire marshal, I mean, the, the road meets the code requirements, so I'm not aware of any issue with the road from the fire perspective, and again, the road meets the code requirement, so I don't even know what the issue would be.
Is there a shoulder along Bryant Road that will allow the school bus to be completely out of the traffic flow, or would it be stopping traffic?
No, no, what the school buses currently do is, when they pick up students on Bryant Road, is just stop traffic.
Okay.
You mentioned that, or gentleman mentioned about the, the sewage. Is the flow line going, dropping back toward the creek, or is there a lift station for the sewage on this property?
The, the flow line would not go back towards the creek, correct?
It's a gravity system.
Sir, if you wanna come up and address the engineering question, please?
It is a gravity system, and it would be tying in lower than, than those residents. But it is a gravity system.
That was my question, yeah, okay.
The, with respect to the grade of the property, it, it is likely true that the grade of the property is more than 7 percent right now, but what we are saying is the, once improved, the grade of the street will be approximately 7 percent. But I don't deny that there are steep grades on the property now, but the property is currently unimproved. I, I think that addresses the questions that were raised. Oh, and there was a question about a fence along the eastern portion of the property. And from our standpoint, if you put a fence across a creek, then that's gonna exacerbate flooding issues. And the way that the property is laid out, there's a lot of elevation changes and woods, frankly, along the eastern portion of the property, that would not encourage or even make it easy to cross over onto the golf course property. So, I believe that addressed all the issues. Are there any other questions?
I guess this might be a question for Robert, but is it 7 percent grade, coming into the street, the street grade coming into the intersection, is that within county code?
Well, it'll, it needs to meet the subdivision improvement plan requirements.
Okay.
The way I understand it is, there may be a grade upward, but once you're, you're at the street, it needs to be flatter, so that you're not-
And, and Dave did mention there's a vertical curve at the street, so that would-
Yeah, so that, as you're, you don't wanna be at the street, you know?
Right.
At an angle like, like this. So, maybe 7 percent going up, perhaps, but I assume that once you get close to the right-of-way, you're gonna have to flatten out some, and that'll be dealt with in more detail at the improvement plan stage, which comes between the preliminary plat and the final plat.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. Weber? Not, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We will now close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for consideration. Anyone have any questions? Counselor, do we vote, two separate votes, one for the plat and one for the variance?
I, I think that there, that'd be probably the, what do I wanna say here, cautious approach, and I'd recommend that.
Okay, the chair will, well, no, we have the, three votes, so rezoning, the plat, and then the variance.
May I add one piece of information? It was asked at the beginning of, towards the beginning of this discussion about what the distance is for the variance between the two points. I think it's about 285 feet from center line to center line, rather than 300 feet, which is the minimum.
Okay.
So, it's a little bit short, and how it's measured, according to our books, is measured from the center line of the one street to the center line of the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so-
Make a motion for approval of the rezoning request.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Klinghammer, second by Mr. Griffin. Mr. Setley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion for approval of the preliminary plat.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. McDonald, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Clary?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes. Make a motion for approval of the requested variance.
I'll second.
Let me find out if I have the language.
Mr. Chairman, on the language, I guess, as we were talking before the meeting got started, I hope P&amp;Z recognizes you're a recommending body, so what you're really doing with the, the, the motion is you're making, you're making the motion to recommend the approval.
Yeah, so, you amend your motion to recommend the council to allow the variance?
Yes.
Second.
Second. Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is conditional use permit request, 3707 Veterans Memorial Parkway. The application is CUP 18-05. The applicant is Puel Clement. I got that right? Did I get it right?
Yes, sir.
Property owner, mutual assurance company partnership, LLP. Use requested automobile sales and zoning is C2, general commercial district. The area is 3.453 acres, locations on the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Parkway. The area is 3.453 acres, locations on the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Arco Drive adjoining the city of St. Charles and Council District Five. Staff.
Sure. You may know this property as the old Brof's mobile home lot. And you may know it as really a deep lot. It's, I guess comparatively narrow, but it's very deep. So what I wanted people to know is we're not talking about the, the backside of this lot. We're really talking about the front portion along Veterans Memorial Parkway. And that portion in 2016 came before you, excuse me, the, the property owners and applicant at that time in 2016 came before you and got a conditional use permit for automobile sales for that front portion. At that time, the conditional use permit, they wanted to do what I would call kind of minimal improvements. That conditional use permit was approved by the county council but expired a few months ago. And so now they're before you again with what I would characterize as more substantial improvements, including paving the front portion of the lot, building a showroom and an automotive repair building and making some other improvements. They're proposing to have spaces for 86 vehicles for sale on the site. And you, you may also want to know that there was a large building that's been removed. So right now, what's out there is really just a really large gravel lot. There's a couple peculiarities about this property. One is that it sits adjoining a couple of residences, but they're really far below. There's a, there's a huge grade change to the east. And so the homes are almost sitting below the level of, of this lot. Those are along Clearview Drive. And along Clearview Drive, it's a mixed commercial and residential area. On the other hand, on the west, you've got Arco Drive, which is more of a commercial or industrial street. And in your packet, the supplement in your packet, there's a communication from someone who owns the property along Arco Drive. And they have concerns about will these large trucks be parked along Arco Drive to load and unload vehicles? Apparently, that's already being done for some of the other car sales lots that are in the area. Because there are already car sales lots up and down Veterans Memorial Parkway. So this would be one of, say, four car sales lots within a relatively short distance. So one of the concerns expressed by the neighbor, will there be enough room on this lot to actually bring onto the property these large trailers so that vehicles can be loaded and unloaded on the property rather than having to do that on, on Arco Drive? County staff, in our analysis, we reviewed the conditional use permit criteria. And we're recommending approval with certain conditions in that we don't believe that the use would be detrimental to or endanger the public health, the safety of general welfare. And we do not believe it'll be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. Some of the reasons that we believe that, one, the property's already close to I-70. So those homes that are there on Clearview, they already deal with the noise and the traffic of I-70 and the South Service Road. This has been used commercially for years for mobile home sales and mobile home repair. Actually, they had this really large building. The way I understand it is they would bring mobile homes kind of underground underneath this building and then repair them. This, this is going to be a lot less intensive than how the property was used traditionally. So with that, county staff is recommending that the planning and zoning commission recommend approval with certain conditions that are provided in your staff report.
Any questions for staff?
I have, Mr. Mueller, I remember 16, we had a long discussion about that big Brof sign that is out there. And some of the people that came to address the commission said, take it down. And we said, does it have to be taken down? And I see one of your conditions here, it's in the past tense, erected. What are we going to do with that sign out there? Is it going to be, they can have their own sign, but that, that thing is huge if you drive down the road and you see it there.
Right.
It would be expensive to take it down, I'm sure.
Right, we actually discussed that, like you mentioned, in 2016. And our determination at that time was that if they reuse the sign as is, so they don't change it structurally, if they, for instance, if they just pop out one panel and put in another panel, they can go ahead and reuse that sign even though it's larger than what's allowed today. But if they change the sign structurally or remove that sign, any sign that they would replace it with would have to meet our current standards. So I would say that the sign, in my thinking, is, is a legal, non-conforming use of the sign.
So is change defined by the structural change or by change in use?
Me for the sign?
Yes.
I think it's the structural use of the sign itself. If they would change the sign structurally or if they were to remove it, it would have to be replaced with something that conforms to our current standards.
Any other questions for staff? The applicant care to come forward?
Yes.
Stepford, I told you. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Pennywell Rogers Clement, 1153 Tall Bridge Way, St. Charles, Missouri, 63303.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Previously, I was here in 2016, as you can remember, to request the conditional use permit for automotive, automotive sales. And it was approved. Back then, we had an old building on the lot. They were just going to renovate it a little bit to have a car sales. Now that building has been demolished, it's a empty land. And we are proposing to put a brand new building up there to make the place real nice, very comparable with enterprise car sales. It's going to cost us over a million dollars to put that building up to make it look good. And we want, we want to be good neighbors to, to everybody. So I'm requesting a approval again this time for conditional use to sell automotive.
Yes. Will there be room on site to unload cars from tractor trailers?
Yes, there'll be a lot of room.
Okay, and you won't use Arco Drive then?
No, that's not the plan.
All right. How many cars do you think will, you'll have room for? Have you, have you laid out your, your parking lot yet?
Yes, in fact, I've submitted the plan to the city. Do we have it up? About 86 cars and there'll be plenty of room. Really, you can put 200 cars, but we are proposing 86 cars. And I've submitted a site plan to them.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are you going to also be doing repair, like oil changes and?
That's not the plan right now. Eventually, we might, but that's not the immediate plan.
What size is the building?
About 6,600 square foot.
And when do you plan to start construction?
And so we're in the process right now with the architect. And we're thinking if everything goes as planned, we could start somewhere in August of this year and then come back to planning and zoning for the site plan and everything else.
I have a question. Are there currently chickens or a goat on the property?
No idea. No, I've never seen any.
Okay. That was in one of the letters.
I thought you pulled it out of the nerve.
No, no, it's in one of the letters. I remember reading it.
That was on the county council meeting on Monday about roosters and chickens.
Any other questions for Mr. Clement? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing for this conditional use permit request. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding this request? Forward, sir. Please raise your right hand, please. You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Camerly, and I own several properties within 500 foot of this lot. And the car lots expect, especially want super bright lights that should shine down on their lot, not neighbors' windows and yards. Is there some rules you could enforce pertaining to that?
Well, it looks like the condition of three says lighting shall not obstruct or interfere with travel on Veterans Memorial Parkway or cast upon residential properties. Sounds like you've addressed it.
Yes, and the county does have lighting standards. It's where it dictates the maximum number of lumens along property line?
Well, they ought to aim them at their lot, not people's backyards. I own, well, okay. My home is 400 foot from this property. I'm up toward the front and the back, backs up to theirs. They have lights that are so bright when I, in the winter, when the leaves are off trees, I got to hold my hand up to be able to see. I can't see stars anymore. If they would just aim the lots at their lot, they wouldn't be bothering. And.
Mike, you have that right now?
I've got.
Lights in your windows right now?
I can't hear you very well.
You have lights in your window right now, currently?
Do I?
Yes.
I've got them all the way up to the back of the house.
And where are those?
Right now, leaves are on the trees, they're not as bad.
And where are those coming from, those lights?
From Brof's lot.
Okay, the current owners of that or?
Pardon me?
The current owners are the people that are, that we're talking about today?
Well, the, the lot has the lights already and I presume these guys will have control of them.
Right, okay.
Okay, there's, the lots down the service road have lights shining so bright when you drive down Spring Drive, you got to shade your eyes to see.
Yeah.
In my home, my, my, my area is 25 feet or 50 feet higher than the service road. And I got 75 foot trees and in the winter, when the leaves are off, those trees are all lit up, a thousand feet away from the service road.
Mm-hmm.
And I've, I've called about them and stuff and they won't do nothing. Another thing, is this lot going to, all the other lots that is free more along there, they park cars all the way past their property lines onto the service road property line. And Spring Drive where we're parked, they park cars on 10 feet out on the right way of Spring, on the pavement, three or four feet. The lot that's there down on the corner, the west side of the Spring. And again, you got the big trucks coming in loaded, they're by the service road, is a hazard. And it just, it's like, once they get in, it's like lost, nobody does nothing about, nothing they do. The used car lots have been bad neighbors, water runoff. The one, I've got Clearview and Fairview, Fairview Drive, Clearview's there and that little subdivision is downhill from the Brof's property. And it ruined three or four homes, the water runoff when they paved the lots on the service road ran down. Lonnie is here, he's got one right next to Brof's and it's like, like he said, 20 feet lower than Brof's. If they pave all that, all that water's going to run down on him. But I, I actually, around my house, I saved it, two of them's ready to demolish now because they can't even live in them. I have built a levee across the back of my yard and behind that service, I'm on the corner of Spring and, and the lots behind me. I had to build a levee to keep water off. My house was almost ruined. I had to annex in the city, put a new sewer system in and everything. But anyway, the water's going to, even up where I live, all the way to the back of the property, eventually, these people may end up with a whole property probably behind me. Right now, they're not getting it. But if you guys give them zoning, you have to come back to do the back too.
Okay, sir, you live on, sir, you live on Spring Drive?
I'm on Spring, but I own properties on Fairview, like four or five properties along there.
Okay, does, does any of your property but the, this property?
The what?
Does any of your property but?
Yeah, yeah, I've got 700 foot of land against our property. But again, most of it's at the back. And I've got one in that little subdivision below where they're building right now.
So Roger, she showed it up there.
Yeah.
Are, so are you guys showing that up there where his?
I'm back at the, on the, I'm down Farver, right in that area. I got all that, the whole end of the street and one up there by the service road on that street, right running parallel on the service road in there, down, down Farver on that street to come to Fairview. But their lot's not going to bother me, but it's just the cars parking out. And I'm, I'm here to ask again about the other lot, if they can't be, do something about the cars. I've called the police before and they don't, they do nothing to them when they're parked where we can't pull out of Spring because of cars.
City.
I mean, there ought to be rules about that.
Yeah, that's in the city, correct?
Yeah. And then I want to ask about another thing that's, it's in part, and I've been trying to deal with city and county both about it. Spring Law Village, a build across the street and they, Spring Drive is a two-lane asphalt road, county road, and they let them park in Spring. And now we're, we can't even meet cars on Spring and it's on a hill right there. They, our whole side's no parking, but the other side, they let the city park right on Spring. And they, they've got room behind it, they wouldn't have to park there, give them 15-minute parking or something so they wouldn't be in the way. But that's, that's not what this is all about here, but I just thought I'd mention it while I was here.
Anything, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak? You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings under the pains and penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Lonnie Haney, and I own the property at 125 Clearview. And it backs right up to what used to be Brof's. And it's got a car lot right next to it, between it and the service road. And my main concern is when Brof's had it and had the, that building up that he was going to utilize, I had an issue with poison ivy in my hedges. And the county come out and give me so much time to get it resolved. And I said, well, why are you out here? Show me what's going on. I says, and Brof's here's got this building with a gutter, the bottom of it is rusted out, so. And I've had water on that property since I moved there when I was seven years old. And it was a farm, farmer's field. We tried to see about doing something with that for runoff. And they'd plow it in the spring, you get a rain. We got real rich back soil in the backyard because we get all prime topsoil. Brof's put 20 feet of a ground above us. They didn't pave it, they gravelled it, put buildings up and water ran down there. At one time, we dug a ditch when it was the, the farm ground and built it up so it would, water would drain. Brof's got in there and did their thing and there wasn't much we could do. And we complained enough and they put some concrete things in, barriers or whatever you want to call it. But they've had these blast, black plastic pipes. And at one time, them pipes shot water up over a little tie wall we had to try directing the thing into the water, into my yard. And when it rains, my backyard, if it ain't a lake, it's a river. And I'm on a septic system, I'm in a county. Your property next to me is in the city and I think Brof's is in the county. And the car lot next to me between me and the service road, I think it's in the county. So if it's in the county, it's still in a septic system. Now, you're going to saturate my ground with water. A septic system don't work with saturated ground. And I've been dealing with it for a long time. And I've been fortunate that I ain't really had no serious septic issues. I've had the basement flooded. It's a rental house now and my renter had all her belongings flooded and flooded in the basement because of runoff. So anything that he, you guys want, if he does that, make sure the runoff's taken care of because he's going to put a ice building up and he ain't going to want his customers walking through water. So I don't know where that water's going to go, but it's going to be all paved, other than downhill. And there's 20 feet up to my backyard and I'm downhill, not counting what Brof's did when they had the nursery, paved that whole place next to me, which now is a used car lot. And then they use, they wore. And then they use, they wash cars all the time. So when we don't have rain, the car lot we got washes cars. Water goes someplace, comes down past me. So if this guy's gonna have a used car lot, they wash cars. They wash cars all the time. Where's that water going? That's my main concern. Now, the light issue, say that there's a thing about how many lumens and everything, that place is lit up like daylight a lot of times at night, now, with the different signs and everything. So kind of least, make it some kind of a, where somebody could live there and feel that it is kind of a residential, because it is bright, and when it rains, it gets dumped off. That's my main concern. You guys approve this? Approve it where there's gonna be a, something where the water issue is not gonna affect me. Because what I understand, I'm not for sure, but you might just want to check on it, what Mike Hammerly there was saying, the houses on Fairview, I think every one of them has water issues, and a couple of them haven't been lived in for a while. I don't know if that's a sewer issue, but lot between Fairview, them houses, and the used car lots, the service road, that's all paved. And you got something that's paved, water doesn't go into the ground, it goes downhill. All residential houses downhill. And I know Powell D. Heating and Air Conditioning's right across the street from my house, and he's, his address is considered Fairview, he's got water issues. And like I said, on the other two houses, and Mike says he's got problem on the corner down there from runoff. That's all I got to say. I mean, it's all runoff, water, you pave something, the water's gotta go someplace. Just, if you let him do this, make sure that something gets done with the water.
Lonnie, you mentioned your 125 Clearview?
Yes.
How much, which home on that map, how far are you back off the road? First house, second?
Uh, I'm the first house.
Is that the rental unit?
Yes. It's not the first building, the first building is a brick building, and it's considered a used car lot now.
Okay, so you're the second one, and that's your rental property?
Yeah, if you see where Fairview and Clearview meet? Yes. Okay, if you go straight up Fairview, and then to the right, that's my house.
That's the one, okay. I did have a question. What, what is your lot size of your house, of your yard?
It's 100 by like 106, 109.
And they allowed, I guess you must have predated the requirements for septic system requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
At one time, the neighborhood wanted to go on the sewer. Only way to do that's get in the city. And septic system pretty much worked, I didn't have no use to go into the city, everybody else did. But really, at one time, I was in the city. It was before I actually owned it, my parents did. I think Mike Hammerly had that same issue, was in the county, in the city, now back in the county. So that was a mix-up back years ago.
So it predated, the septic system predated the current requirements?
Right. I think, uh, house is 40s, in the 40s or something, early 50s it was built.
Okay.
So...
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Did I say one thing?
Hold on, sir, sir, sir?
There's at least 25 residences within 200, who have been 500-footed that lot. There's 25 residents, 300, some of them 350, 400-footed by our homes, and the lights need to be egged down to ground.
Anyone else look to speak on this?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I already was sworn in, do you need to do it again?
I'm gonna swear you in again.
Okay.
You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, these proceedings are under the pains and penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
For the record, please state your name and address, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Once again, Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident, mailing address is P.O. Box 1535, O'Fallon, 63366. My question is, at the county council meeting, another automotive business came up, and my attendance here at tonight's meeting is to have the county change its ways, be proactive and protect adjoining property owners and neighborhood property values. I'm looking at the Planning and Zoning Commission and the planning staff and community development staff to, across the board, start instituting conditions on not only automotive-related businesses, but also storage lots. It's been of some contention before the county council. Previous Monday's meeting, talk of the North Service Road East, which appeared before you at last month's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, that lot was atrocious. It was out of control. There were numerous code violations, numerous junk cars that remained there for years, generations upon generations, and it was never cleaned up. It was an environmental eyesore. Nobody would want to move in or build the subdivision or any other commercial structures near that site. Now, somebody has bought that site and is cleaning up the site and got most of the junk, most of the scrap metal, and the derelict vehicles off the property. But I want to ensure, and I'm not pointing fingers at this gentleman, I'm for his business, I'm for commerce and for free businessship, but I would like the following conditions, because staff doesn't put conditions on automotive businesses, and I think that's a shame. We need to start as a county making sure that there's assurances and protections on conditional use permits. I would ask the commission to consider the following conditions: that no unlicensed vehicles be allowed on the property; that no derelict vehicles, meaning flat tires, broken windows, non-running engines, remain on the property for more than seven days; that no parts or barrels be stored outside of the building; that no storage of tires, used oil, solvents, outside of any building; that total vehicles cannot remain on the property for more than 45 days, to give the owner of the property ample time to negotiate a settlement with any insurance companies, if that's an option. And I also, after reviewing some of the information that was submitted to staff, I'd like to see a parking striping plan, a landscaping plan, and again, the photometric, which would be the lighting scheme, did not appear on there. But we need to start putting conditions on conditional use permits. We want to make sure that everybody is honest and responsible, and we want to think that they're responsible from the get-go, but things happen. You know, time is precious, and they forget about it, and this derelict car, this license expires, flat tires happen, broken windows happen, and all of a sudden, it turns into be a junkyard. I could show you numerous automotive properties across the county, and I think it's time that we stand up and ask for accountability and responsibility from the planning and zoning staff, from the planning and zoning commission, and the county council. And from here on out, for every automotive business or storage business, I will be here to testify for these simple conditions. And I hope that you agree with me, I hope you'll take them into account, and I think it's time that we change our ways as a county government in reference to assurances and to protect property, property owners of adjoining properties. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Deanoff? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak regarding this request for a conditional use permit? If not, we will close the public hearing, ask the applicant to come back. Some of the issues that were raised, the lighting, the runoff, uh...
Yes, so currently, they are not, there's not one lighting in the property that I will be taking over. All the lighting is behind, it's a total of about eight acres long, I'm only taking the front couple acres, and so that's a completely different property, not my, at the bottom part of it. So the front part of it, all the poles has been taken down, and so if we were to put new lighting up there, we will have to conform with the current zoning requirements to get the lighting up the right way.
Okay, who owns the property in the rear?
The same, same property owner.
I think there's a lease, a lease area up front for this conditional use permit, is that right, sir?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
What, in terms of the paving, that's been brought up, and I, I don't know if this is complete, but I don't see any kind of retention or detention basin for all the additional surface area. Now, I know it's gravel now, but if you put concrete on it, it's gonna have much faster outflow of water. What is gonna be done on retention and detention of the water?
So when the architect and the construction come in here to get more, to get the site plan done, they will have more concrete information. I did submit a map of where there's a basin right now at the property, the south part of the property, that I submitted to them, there's a basin in there right now.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I do, going for Robert. So this is on just the front half of the property, but are we being requested to give the variance for the entire property?
There's no variance that I'm...
I mean, I'm sorry, conditional use.
Oh, conditional use permit. The requests, let's see, I think the, I don't remember if the legal description includes the entire Brof's property or not, but the drawing that they've submitted, that's before you for approval, is only for the front portion, I think it's three acres.
3.45, three acres.
Yes, it's only for the front, the conditional use is only for the front.
So in expansion, should this be approved, in expansion beyond this, would have to come back before this group. I also have a little information about stormwater and lighting, if you have questions about that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission, any questions for staff?
I just make a comment, because I heard Monday's county council meeting, and Arnie Deanoff spoke with those conditions, made me think, between now and then, he brought them up again. I think everybody here, not just in St. Charles, if you've driven from here to Kansas City or Springfield, and the size of the roads, you see auto sales, and there's thousands of them, and you see rusted vehicles, weeds growing up, but quote-unquote, they're called auto sales. And I think he may make a point, something to think about in the future, to prevent, under the definition of auto sales, as St. Charles County grows, so we can prevent some of that unsightly view. And I think he made some good points, maybe, I heard it on Monday, so maybe the other commissioners can absorb some of this, but I think it's a good thought process. And I don't know where it stops, starts here, or at the county council level with Mr. Klinghammer, and he's heard it on Monday as well. But as we grow, I think probably, Mr. Deanoff made some good points, something to think about.
Well, throw my two cents, we're thinking, a code violation is a code violation, and we pick auto sales out, what about everything else that's out there, restaurants, people that don't cut their grass, it's shabby. A code violation is a code violation, that's where it has to be enforced.
You're, that's very well said. We don't have one set of codes for auto sales and another set of codes for, you know, storage shed sales, it all gets handled the same. Now, a lot of our code enforcement is complaint-driven. Given the size of St. Charles County and the number of properties that are out there, it is still something that is largely complaint-driven. I'm not gonna say exclusively, but largely complaint-driven. So anytime people see things that are not up to code, whether it be grass that's growing through, or our cars with flattened tires, that is a code violation. It doesn't matter if it's on a, on a residential lot or a commercial lot, it's, from that standpoint, it's the same thing. So, you know, one of the things that Mr. Deanoff talked about is, you know, that our staff needs to start making recommendations and actual conditions, well, we have a list of six of them. There, I don't want, I don't want people to think that we're just up here approving conditional use permits without any conditions that are, that are outlined. There are, there are six of them, and the two that came up the most, I guess, would be lighting and the stormwater runoff, which is, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's handled at the site review timeframe, correct? And I do believe that we have more stringent requirements now on the shielding and the baffles that are around lights that direct it more down, rather than, than a floodlight, which, you know, goes horizontal as well.
Right.
So can you talk about the water and the...
Sure.
Yes, please, thank you.
Yeah, the water, I remember walking the site in 2016 with Development Review Director, who's a, who's an engineer, and he noted that, this is my recollection, the water, there's an easement along the eastern property line, it runs really far down along eastern property line, and there's an area-wide or group stormwater detention basin, and the way it's set up is not that great, but it's just the way it is, it was created years ago. Now, now that the property's being redeveloped, we'll have to look at it again in terms of, do they need to require any onsite detention or not? Because in 2016, they weren't gonna redevelop the property, sorry, in 2016, they weren't gonna redevelop the property, but now they are. So at the site plan approval stage, we'll review at that time whether they need to now do onsite detention or not. I would say gravel surface has a lot of runoff already. In fact, it's mostly, mostly runoff, there's very little water that actually typically goes down in the ground when you have gravel surfaces, most of it runs off. The lighting, we do have quite good lighting standards now. A lot of the complaints that have come about this property and the lighting is the storage area in the back for the, for the RVs, and that has, the way I see it, it's got like this, just kind of raking across the, horizontally across the several properties. But today, it's gotta be new lighting fixtures, it has to be downcast, and I would encourage the applicant to look at what's called full cutoff lighting.
Okay. I guess, just one thing I heard you say, and I don't want to be taken out of context, the previous stormwater detention system was inadequate or not the best. Now is certainly the time, though, that we can look at making improvements to that, and I'm sure that what, that your department will, will take that into consideration, that it's, it's not working as well as it could now. So we have an opportunity here, since it is getting redeveloped, to improve what is already there. Thank you.
And they're also gonna bring that before us, too, right? Or do they not, do they bring their plan before us?
Site plans don't come before this body, but it's reviewed administratively, following very specific rules. And I would, I would submit stringent rules on how things are developed.
Very good.
I, I guess, in terms of the point Mr. Deanoff made was about the derelict cars and the debris and the solvents and things like that. Now, perhaps this isn't the right venue, but there is proportionality in, in code violations, too. And I think that, you know, high grass on a, on a lot, while it'd be, you know, somewhat distracting, I think that you have cars and solvents and things laying around, I think it's a different proportionality. And I don't know if this is where it would be addressed, but I think that it would be interesting to pursue that in some degree.
Right, a couple of things. One is, now that the site's being redeveloped, we talked about this with our director, they will need to pull back the paved area outside of the front yard setback. So right now, it extends all the way to the front property line, but because it's now being redeveloped, it's gonna have to be pulled out of that front property line, so there'll be a fewer encroachment, I think, of cars onto the, onto the street, or fewer opportunities for that. In terms of grease and things like that, now that it's gonna be redeveloped, they're gonna have to have certain types of grease traps and other measures to make sure that it doesn't get into either stormwater or into the sanitary sewer system. This does, this site does have sanitary sewer hookup. We've contacted the city of St. Charles, and they will allow this to be, go onto the system without having to annex, they say, because we asked that question, too. Let's see, there was a couple of other questions you had in there.
Well, I was just wondering what venue there might be to, to, to address the proportionality of code difference.
Oh, the code violations. So right now, property maintenance code, we do not allow derelict vehicles, unlicensed vehicles, wrecked vehicles. derelict vehicles, unlicensed vehicles, wrecked vehicles.
Okay.
Those would be code violations. Also, in the C2 general commercial district, we allow by right automobile repair shop, including automobile shop, provided that wrecked or dismantled vehicles or parts are stored in a building or enclosed within an eight-foot site proof fence. So if this is going to take, have, include a portion that's going to repair cars, those wrecked or dismantled vehicles will have to be stored either indoors or behind an eight-foot high site proof fence, one or the other.
Okay.
The other two car lots that are to the east, are those in the county or the city of St. Charles? I know there's a smaller lot and there's International Motors.
I think one of them might be in the county, but I know that there is at least one that's in the city, too.
One to the north is in the city.
Well, going to, to our right.
Yeah.
The words, is that says unincorporated there?
That right there.
Yeah, that's the international, so, yeah. I do know they're driving through there, there's, they'll park their cars right at the edge of the roadway.
Right. Well, what's nice about this is, once they have to pull that pavement back, it'll be a lot harder to do that, it'll be more like a barrier to help enforce that.
Anything else? Any other comments, discussions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to approve conditional use permit 18-05, subject to recommendations made by staff.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Setley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Okay, next on the agenda is conditional use permit request located at 3695 Highway D and 3703 Highway D, application is CUP 18-6. Property owners Gerald A. Keven and Glenn and Jay Keven Revocable Trust. The use requested is automobile, boat, truck, trailer, and RV storage and a single-family residence. The zoning, C2 general commercial district, the area is 4.57 acres. Our location is on the north side of Highway D, approximately 800 feet east of Highway Double D. This is located in Council District Two. Staff?
All right, as you noted, there are two separate conditional use permit applications with this application. The first is specifically for automobiles, boats, trucks, trailers, and RV storage, outdoor storage. There is a concept plan that is attached to your packet. While the applicant didn't really outlay the dimensions on the property, how the RVs and storage will go, because that takes a lot of CAD work and several days of working on it, they do know that it'll be approximately 190 parking spaces on this property, it is a fairly large property. What they have done, though, is they have outlined, shown where the detention area will be, they've also shown where there will be fencing, site proof fencing, and the lighting. The other conditional use permit is for the single-family residence, and if you look at this, it's this residence right here, the rest of these buildings have all been The concept plan right now shows the fencing outside of that single-family residence area. The person that will be living there will also be a sort of caretaker for the property, keep an eye on it, make sure everything's working properly. That fencing area may adjust, it depends on the location and the exact needs of the septic system. We do have, as one of our conditions, a septic system inspection, since it is changing ownership. That is a requirement by the Division of Building Code Enforcement to have septic systems inspected. The applicant is also asking, well, is intending to keep the area gravel, a gravel parking area rather than paved, that does help to cut down a little bit, as Robert mentioned earlier, it does help a little bit on the stormwater runoff, it's not perfect, it's not a totally, you know, pervious area, but the applicant has, will have this engineered, and the pre-engineering is showing an approximate location and need of the detention area in the northeast corner of the property. But the gravel parking, we will review that when the site plan does come in, and it is at the option of the director to approve that. Okay, with that, there, the staff is recommending approval with conditions. One of the conditions is, as I mentioned, the septic system inspection. The site plan will have to be submitted, the formal site plan, and be in conformance with all ordinances, no conditional use shall be active until all conditions of the approval have been met, and the fourth one, the use of the property cannot take place, but it must be in active use within two years of approval by this commission and council.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Griffin?
Well, this is probably two-minute drive from my house, very familiar with the property because it goes back to 2008 when Cheryl Hillwood was on here and it got rezoned and blah, blah, blah. This aerial photo is totally, for the other commissioners, it doesn't even look like that. You mentioned one of the residents, I think for the, I know what it is, but I think for everybody else to have a little visual picture, which home is still left there that's going to have this residence.
It, right now, the arrow's on the home that will be left.
That's it, and all the other ones are gone.
Correct.
Because I think I called back in November, December, I talked to Robert, because I saw activity on there, what was going on. There was a disturbance permit issued, and I think I talked to you, Ali, after that. Then there was a demolition application to get rid of the house, and I was not here, I was, missed the meeting when, but I watched it remotely when the planning and zoning annexed the other property. But I just wanted to point it out for the other people, very, very familiar with this property and how the history of it, which isn't in the report, but I'll leave it there.
Any other questions of staff? If not, would the applicant want to come forward? Do you solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings under pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Gerald A. Keven, 760 Helen Camp Drive, Welton Springs, Missouri, 63304. And we, yes, we are proposing boat and RV storage on this particular piece of property. And I know you guys have heard this many times, there is a very drastic need for boats and RVs. The last time I was in here was approximately one year ago on Phase Two of the Highway Z, one that I put in, was roughly about 130 spaces at that particular spot on Phase Two. We are down to, the whole lot is 28 spaces left. There's very much of a need for boats and RV. The average median income for St. Charles County, when we looked it up, it's $80,000 plus. When people are making that, they do like to have extra, extra things that they buy, from trailers to RVs and so on, and there's very much of a need. One of the other needs that was, was kind of interesting and actually proud to be able to be a part of this, when the, when our Highway Z facility went in, this last year, when the tax bill came, it was $8,400 more than what that property was in the past. And I know some people are like, well, it's not all about the money. That is correct. However, Francis Howell School District would have loved to have had their proposal this last time voted in as a tax increase, but it did get voted down. And when you, when I'm paying $8,400 more on this particular piece of property, I don't know what the breakdown is for the fire, police, and school district, but there's a big number that goes towards the school district that is, that is going for that. And you know what? That's, we need to have the property taxes at the same time, but mine went up 8,400 dollars approximately this last one. So in this particular area, we have many of our people that are in our other storage facilities that we have live in the defiance area and said, hey, it looks, sure looks like you're preparing another spot for a storage facility. And I said, we would like to do that, and at the same time, they're like, that would be fantastic, it would be a lot closer to where I live at. And so we have had many people that are wanting to have storage in that particular area for us. As far as, you're correct, we took down many, many buildings, we took down two houses, we took down four buildings. As you can see, there was many derelict vehicles that were on that. The last tenant that we had in there was, we had to evict them, and it's, we just knew we wanted to clean it up. It didn't look good from, from the road or anybody else. Most of the houses, the house that was there, I don't know about the one house, but the house that was the main one on 3703 was built somewhere in the 50s, along with the house that would still remain was in the 50s. The two houses on the side of those, I believe, are in the 50s also. So when you have a 1950s house, most of them are all put in, they don't have concrete foundations, they have cinder block foundations, some people, it works real well to keep them, keep them up. These houses were not adequate, you couldn't afford to put money into them to get them to be anything at all. They needed to come down, we did that. We also, during the land, special land use permit, to be able to flatten the area out, we asked to put berms up, which we have put berms up on the side where the firehouse is, which is to the left of the property, thank you, and so we have a berm from there going forward, all the way across the front, over to the house, and then one that also goes straight north to block anything there. I did that for two reasons. The main reason was that, so that at a, at a meeting like this, people could actually see what it looks like, being that I already own the property and be able to put the trees up and try to screen that in a good way, and so that people would understand, okay, this is what he's trying to do, he's trying to screen the property in a, in a good way. So that's my, always my intent is to, I don't want to have to, somebody to look at our property and say, I don't, I don't like to have a storage one. It's like, hey, we'll do whatever we can to screen it properly, and, you know, somebody wants to recommend more, we'll do whatever we had. I think Mr. Klinghammer, there was, one of the things that I had proposed at one time was even to totally shield everything, was a bamboo type tree system, and you had said, no, please don't do that, I don't, that's not what we're wanting, the looks of that aren't very, very good. But I don't know if anybody has driven out there, but I'm very happy with the way the sod has taken, the trees are in, and the way things are looking out there at this particular time, so. But anyway, I don't know if anybody has.
I've got a question. Mr. Keven, I've been on the commission for a long time, you've been here many times in the past.
Sure, yes.
And most of the time, when there was discussion, it was, can I see it, can you hide it, along the lines that you're talking about? Now, I ask you just straight out, have you had compliance problems? And if the county, have we had issues where people came and complained about anything this man has done? How many do you have in the county?
I believe we have seven of them.
Seven.
Six, I think, in the county, one in Jefferson County.
Jefferson County.
Uh huh. I don't think we've had any complaints on, on our facilities at all. I'll give you, for instance, Mr. Cronin, that is out on Highway 79, a county councilman also, has stated numerous times, he, Mr. Keven operates one close to me, and I think it looks really good. It didn't look as good as I wanted it to look, we just put $7,000 into the fencing, it was leaning over, and I called my fencing guy and I said, hey, let's get this straightened back up, let's make it look good. I always like to make things look professional, my dad always gave, he said, one thing I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a good name, don't screw it up. So that's my, my opinion is always to make sure that I maintain that.
And I'm familiar with some of yours, and I would ditto that, you do a pretty good job at it.
Thank you, thank you.
Again, going back a little history, because your derelict tenant was a problem for probably eight or 10 years. You came before us, we changed the zoning because he was selling cars, and it was illegal. So we changed the zoning, and I remember Bob Boinek, I talked with him, he was allowed to store cars but not sell them. So what he was doing was putting one car out in the front for sale, and then he had 50 of them in the back. So this was the hook, come on, if you don't like this, but he was doing it. There was a guy on Highway F, I think, two years ago filed a suit, not only with animals, because he was, had a horse, several horses there, and he had a piece of rope right next to the road, and the horses would get out, they'd go up to the Double D market and so forth and so on. So I agree, you're going to make a great improvement getting rid of that.
Absolutely.
That being said, I looked at some of the things, and I talked to, my biggest concern is the buffer. And I, on Monday, I spoke with Michael Holbert regarding this for probably about a half hour, and he, a couple buzzwords, the site proof along the residential boundary. I've seen the berms, I drove out, and again, to ditto, Mr. Setley, you do great jobs. I do have a problem, though, we drove by again, the one at, on Highway Z, you put in pine trees, and those things, and I have pictures, which I want to share with you after this meeting.
Sure.
Those pine trees that are susceptible, Missouri botanical garden, they don't grow very fast, even when they grow up, I'll show you some pictures, there's no buffer, I mean, you can just see through it, and I know they're staggered, but I looked at the ones today on Z, they haven't been watered, you have a lot of them dying, and with, I don't know how high a typical RV is, but, I mean, there's zero, even with the berm, you can see them. Where we are is a lot different, the homes around us, as you're familiar with the area, and I'd like you even to come to my house and take a look at, you can take a specimen, very cheap, but it'll make a very good buffer, is to put in some Norwegian spruce. They will knit together, and I have pictures with the exact same centers with a 25-year-old white pine, that you can see anything through it, and a spruce that you can't see anything. We planted these nine years ago, and they're higher than a two-story house, but they provide excellent cover. In the analysis, you requested a six-foot proof fence, and I thought, oh, maybe a fence, but I don't know how high RVs, I don't know whether that's going to do it. And then I looked at the 405-135 C2, item number four, this is under the, this is on permissible use, is an, they, with an eight-foot site proof fence. So I disagree with this six-foot fence, and I think you're a good steward of the land, you. of the land. You, you want quality things. I think the area, I know the homes, I lived there, I'm two minutes from that property. You're welcome to come visit. And the demographics there, they're stored, because I know, have neighbors, big RVs, boats, because of indentures, you can't put a thirty-five-foot boat in your driveway. You gotta get it out. A lot of people are stored, maybe probably in, in your facilities. But I think that needs to be buffered along Highway Double D, not only in the front, I would suggest spruces. And the back, which is woods, I agree with the comment, that it really doesn't, you're not going to see anything from back there. But next to the firehouse, and to the right where the residence, the traffic has just, it's a lot of traffic. And I think that both sides, if you're agreeable to buffer both the left and right sides and across the front of the property. But I think the front definitely, and similar to the side, you need more than just a berm. And as exhibited just by your property on, on Z, they don't work. It's just, they haven't been watered, they're dying. And spruces that we have are berm exactly like yours. I can show you a picture before and after, and you would be so, I think any other future development, you'd get rid of the pines. You'd call most, I talked to some other people here, white pine trees are susceptible to nematodes and other diseases. Not a good, it looks good on paper, but at the end of the day, it doesn't follow the intent where it's buffered. I thought of putting one of those white fences up, but I think that's more expensive than planting the proper trees to buffer it. But I, I'm addressing you and later on to the other commissioners, but I think both sides and along Double D needs a better buffer. If that, if you're agreeable to work.
Sure. Absolutely. For the most part, a tree that is a white pine, or I think it's a Norway spruce is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
They're both very fast growing. End result, I think the Norway spruce would probably do the better job because you cannot see through it. However, on the, when I'm looking at statistics, they say that the white pine grows faster. To me, it does not matter. I'll put in the Norway spruce, I'll put in the, the white pine, however, somebody would think that that would be a better solution. I have no problem in, in doing that. And we can plant.
I took pictures of.
Sure.
Any other questions for?
I, I do have a question. Do you see this property, this use as an interim use?
Yes, I would. It's typically outside storage is not the highest and best use.
Right. That's what I'm looking for. The highest, best use of this property, the way that area is developing, does not appear to be this type of use.
That's exactly right. And typically, that is the, the way it is. This is kind of an interim, where there, there is not sewers out in that particular area at some point. I'm sure there will be, just like anything else that is developing in, at that rate. So I'm sure that, that would be, and it's, and it's relatively close to the corner at the same time. So somebody, somebody will want it.
Developing as a retail type of, of, of use versus what you have.
I would say that would be correct.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Mr. Keven, the other storage lots that you have, are they gravel also? And have you run into problems with dust coming off of them, interfering with, we got residents that are, well, a firehouse and a residence on the other side that are, you know, in close proximity. We've had issues with some other large lots that have dust that, that kicks up from these. And what, what's your plan to, to address that?
Gotcha. One of the things that they, they have is a calcium chloride that you can spray on it to keep dust down. However, most people would envision a gravel road that somebody is going by, and the dust is flying everywhere. Everybody has no, seen that, and everybody's driven down a gravel road like that. One of the things that, on a particular parcel like this, the max that you're going to get up to is probably, not speed-wise, the maximum distance is roughly going to be two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet. I haven't looked exactly at this one, but you'd have RVs on your side, and it's very small. For somebody to, nobody wants to or needs to get up to a high rate of speed in those things. They're, they're pulling something, they're going five miles an hour. They do, they don't want to wreck. And the other thing that you're, that you have is you don't get the compaction, you don't get the gravel breaking down like you would on a road in a high speed and people traveling a whole lot. So if you look at our lots, the rocks are still the rocks. They're, they're not broken down into the smaller, smaller particles.
Six that you have are gravel or rock? Are all the lots that you have in St. Charles County rock? Or do you have?
I have, one of them that is, that I bought from another gentleman, and that one is concrete. All of the other ones are gravel. Yes. And I haven't had any, any complaints at all from anybody saying, hey, it's, it's dusty and so on. And I've actually taken pictures of different RVs that were dark. There was another down in Jefferson County that they were worried about the dust also. And I went on a, a random day that was two weeks with no rain, took pictures and showed those. There wasn't any dust on them, just because there's such a low rate of speed that are going on, on there.
What's the base depth of your gravel?
My, we have fourteen inches. So what we'll do is, we'll generally put down about six inches of two-inch clean.
Right.
And then after that, you go with a, a two-inch minus, that is another six inches. And then you'll have two inches of a one, typically a one-inch clean. Is, people don't want to get it in their RV, so you have to have clean on, on top. But we get a lot of compliments that, you know what, there's no pumping and thawing. Other places, they get stuck in, different ones. We do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I think that dust issue would be just having that site with spruces, the way they knit together, you never see an ounce of dust coming out on Highway D or to the fire station or to the other.
Sure. I love, I love the Norway spruce, and they cost the same as a white pine. So I'm all, all ears on that. I will say, one of the, the ones to where I regret on, you know, everybody has things to where they wish I'd have done that a little bit different. One of the areas on Highway Z that was put in, when it was put in, the guy that was building it put in dirt that was not, a dirt that should have had trees that were growing very well.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out how to amend that and get something different growing in there. And maybe the Norway spruce would, would be a little better on that.
Dead ones that have been replaced, it looks pretty ugly when you drive by.
Yeah. On the first, that first phase is, yeah, the white pines aren't doing very well on that first phase. There's no, no question.
Do you have to do any soil sampling, you know, make sure there's no plastic soil or any kind of thing that would, I know you, that would be, you're not going to do foundation, so it's probably not that big a deal. But do you do some kind of core samples of?
No, on the lots themselves? No. Not since it's, it's gravel.
Right.
And you wouldn't have any settling or anything, wouldn't be an issue.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Keven. We'll now open the public hearing for this continual, conditional use permit. Is anyone here to speak? Yes, sir. Come forward. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings are under pains and penalties and perjury.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gene Hoffmeyer. I live at thirteen twenty-eight Highway DD. And I'm the guy that's on the backside of this property. Now, everybody's, everybody's talked about the barriers in the front. That's my backyard. That backyard used to have well over a hundred trees in it. It's now flattened out. It's got probably, on the very corner, you can't tell it, but it drops down in that one upper right-hand corner. There's probably between fifteen and eighteen feet of fill. Since this has started, I've had dump trucks coming all hours of the day. Like probably, probably between a hundred and fifty and two hundred loads of dump, of dirt. And they come in at seven o'clock in the morning, and they pull their, pull their bed up, and then they slam the back end of it to get everything out of it. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Now, let me give you a little, little information on myself. I used to run the safari campground over on Highway forty. If you've been around long enough, you know where it's at. I was the manager there. So I'm probably the last guy to say, I don't want RVs in my backyard. But when I see, when I looked at what the conditional uses, it says automobile, boat, truck, trailer, and RV storage. Now, the automobile, that doesn't bother me much. The boats, those guys are good, I don't, I'm a fisherman. I'm going to be out there at six o'clock in the morning getting my boat. Trucks, now you're going to talk about commercial trucks that these subdivisions also don't allow. We had a, we had a ride finder's van that we couldn't park in its subdivisions. We had to go and park it on the private, on the public parking lots. And now you're going to have trailers. Now, if it's just a trailer, if it's a, somebody doing construction, they're going to be in and out of there early in the morning. This is my backyard. I've talked to, talked to Mr. Keven about the lighting. How much lighting is going to be in my backyard? I used to have, I used to have a hundred trees. Now I'm going to have a bunch of lights back there. We talked about a fence, but we never really, never really firmed anything up. And I'm not going to, I'm not sure how the fence is going to work when you've got twenty feet of fill on one end. Where's that fence going to be? Is it going to be at the old elevation? Or is it going to be up at the top of the new elevation? And how much, how much setback is there going to be to go up twenty feet? I don't know any of this stuff. I don't know, they talk about a retention pond? I haven't seen any plans on it. I hear, you know, they said, oh, there's going to be one. Where's it going to be? All that, all that is going to drain onto my property because just on the other side of that is where the creek starts. Believe it or not, that highway is on the grand divide. Every, every drop of water that falls on my property goes to the Missouri River. Every, every drop that falls on the other side goes to the Mississippi. That creek stop, starts right there. This is all going to drain onto my property, as well as everything on the corner, because I own around the corner. So I've got, I've already got the firehouse, which is not a problem. I've got the, got the market. I used to have the veterinarian, the other little strip mall over there. They all drain on my property. And now I've got what used to come down and go around, and it was all grass and trees, is now going to be rock. You guys tell me that, you know, we're going to take the drainage into consideration, but I don't hear any firm plans on what consideration's going to be. And if it's all filled dirt and it's all rock, I can imagine what's going to come down that creek. It's going to be, it's going to be mud. Been there, done that. Got the T-shirt. I wish I could say all, I'm all for it. I'm not all for the automobile, truck and trailer parking. I've got a friend that's in the, he's in the storage business. He doesn't allow them. He does not allow construction trailers. Does not allow construction trucks. Because he said they're going to be in and out all the time. They're going to be in and out early in the morning, late at night. Now, is this, is this what, you know, I, I don't know what the site shielding is going to be for me. Is it going to be a six-foot fence? Is it going to be an eight-foot fence? Is it going to be some trees? I don't know what the plan is. I'd just like to know what, what the big, what the big plan is so that I don't get to see RVs and boats and just everything coming and going at all hours of the day and night. It was a nice quiet corner at one time. That the traffic, like you, I mentioned, the traffic is, is getting worse practically by the week. I can, I can, can't tell you how many times I've seen cars backed up from the intersection well past this piece of property, getting through at night. We never used to see anything like that. It's going to get worse. And I can't, can't imagine trying to pull out onto there with, with RVs and trucks and big boats and stuff like that. It's going to be challenging because the one side that that's on, those people are going to be doing fifty-five miles an hour, because that's the speed limit. And they don't have to stop for another eight hundred feet. At least that's what they think. So I don't know. I, I'm, I'm not totally against it, but I, I just, I would like to see some, I'd like to see what the plan is. We're sitting, you know, I've been, I keep hearing that we're going to find out. And I got these concerns, but nobody ever answers, or nobody ever knows what's going on. That's about all I got to say. It's, it's a sticky situation for me. I mean, I've gone from, I've gone from living in the woods to living on the edge of what everybody in these subdivisions calls an unsightly situation. The subdivisions don't want, don't want the travel trailers. Subdivisions don't want the commercial trucks. Subdivisions don't want the boats. So they get, so they get stuck out in my backyard. It's got to go, I know it's got to go someplace. But this is, you know, this was brought on by all these subdivisions and all their, all their rules and regulations. Person owns a piece of equipment, they ought to be able to keep it at their own house, not jumble them all up into a big junkyard. Very expensive junkyard. That's all I have to say.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You solemnly declare and affirm that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and these proceedings are under pains and penalties and perjury.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Arnie A. C. Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. Mailing address is P.O. Box fifteen thirty-five, O'Fallon, six thirty-three, sixty-six. This business has been made, this business design has been made, and was spoken by the previous speaker, because of subdivision covenants and restrictions. Most covenant restrictions in St. Charles County and our municipalities do not allow the parking of boats on driveways, jet skis, trailers, commercial trucks, and semi-trucks. Mr. Klinghammer mentioned last time about the staff conditions. In my opinion, the staff is very lean on conditional use permits. For this, four staff conditions are, number one, that they have to commit to a site plan, which in my opinion is putting the cart before the horse. They should have come in with the site plan, done a responsible plan before coming, before planning and zoning for a conditional use permit, which is basically permission to do such. Number two staff condition was the septic tank system be inspected. Number three is if the two above uses are not met, the conditional use permit is not, is not granted, or is not, I guess, written, given to the owner of the property. And number four, the conditional use permit is revocable if not, if the property is not used two years for a storage facility. Of concern is the site proof fence, and it's come up in past county council meetings with the same developer. In my opinion, the developer is very responsible, very honest, puts on a nice product. But there are some neighbors out there who have complaints and have, who also enjoy property values, and they need to be treated fairly, along with the property owner and the applicant here this evening. Mr. Keven is a man of his word, and he is honest, ethical, and responsible. But not all storage facilities in St. Charles County are responsible and accountable. We need to protect the residential adjoining property values in this case. And as the speaker before me spoke, there needs to be a firm site plan. I think it's a little hypocritical that the staff didn't require a site plan be done and plans be drawn up firmly before going to the planning and zoning process and on to the county council. I think, again, it's putting the heart of the cart before the horse. You know, a conditional use permit is a guarantee to the county. You know, a conditional use permit is a guarantee to the county and to us as 425,000 citizens. Conditional use permits, as defined by state statute, are a defined set of conditions. They're restraints that are making the property owners responsible and accountable to us citizens. It provides insurance, not only to county staff, not only to our citizens, but to you as a planning and zoning commission to build a responsible and nice community. Conditional use permits, according to state law, are revocable if any of the conditions are violated. It protects us. It protects the conformance of guarantees that the property owner will do what the conditions are set up in a CUP, conditional use permit. And it's the right and responsible way to run our county government. I that, I would like to ask that the following conditions be added by staff in the planning and zoning commission as I will seek approval from the county council of the same. Number one, that the condition, that the conditional use permit is void if the property is sold for another use. That it is non-transferable to another entity. Also, that no licensed vehicles are allowed to be stored on the property. That no derelict vehicles, flat tires, broken windows, non-running engines be stored on the property. That no parts, barrels, or junk be stored outside of any buildings on the property. That no materials be stored outside of any buildings. That the storage of tires and other accumulated goods and possible accessories to mobile homes, vehicles, bumpers, those type of things not be stored in the outside. And that if there's any vehicles that are damaged, that they don't remain on the vehicle, on the property for more than 45 days. That there be a filed landscaping plan, photometric luminance plan, and that we have a site-proof fence to protect all the adjoining property owners. I'm asking for simple conditions. You know, either we could stand up and say that we want responsible and accountable property owners, or we could go to other adjoining counties that are around us that are a first or, I'm sorry, a third or fourth-class county where they don't have zoning restrictions. It's kinda the Wild, Wild West, do as you please. You can have a $500,000 mansion, and you can have a $10,000 trailer right next to that mansion without any buffers or setbacks. So, I, this is my home, this is your home. We want to instill property values. We want to instill some type of responsibility. And we want us to instill integrity into our zoning districts and to make sure that all parties around any zoning change or, or conditional use permit is protected. And if you talk to your council, Mr. Hazelwood, he'll tell you that a conditional use permit is where you put those restrictions, not with codes, but it's another meet. It's another restriction that you can hold accountable, the property owner, that if they don't meet X to, X to Z responsibilities, that you as a planning and zoning commission and the county council can revoke that conditional use permit until it's brought up to code. So, it's one standard that the law provides that protects us as citizens and the county as a whole. Thank you for listening to me. I hope we change our ways. I hope we provide for a comprehensive, nice community and that we instill accountability and responsibility in these conditional use permits rather than having one or two staff, lean staff recommendations that don't have any meat into it. You know, you could say, "Oh, yeah, we can have derelict vehicles, send code enforcement." Well, you know what? Look at the North Service Road that was here last month. That was deplorable for generations. Code enforcement never went out. There were no tickets written on that property. Nothing ever happened. A conditional use permit per state law holds the property owner and the conditional use permit applicant responsible. Thank you.
Well, I certainly enjoyed that definition of a CUP process. I know it's new to all of us up here, but I...
One thing, you guys have some stuff in your, think, if I was living where these people are, how would I like it?
Yes, sir. Anyone else speak in this application? The applicant wants to come back.
No, you already sworn in. Okay, we're good. Okay, as, as far as, you know, I know Gene and I've met him many times out at the facility. I'd love to show you the plot, you know, our preliminary plan.
General, general, speak this way.
Oh, sorry. Anything that I could do to, to, to go through the process to help him feel comfortable. I did offer to, to do something to where we would do some, some berms. This was actually on his property to, and I said, "It would be at my cost. I would put trees, whatever that would be, to help." The reason, and Mr. Cleary, the reason for that, if it was ever sold to somebody else, the reason why I said on his property, those berms would have trees that were on there and nobody could touch them. That's the reason why that I mentioned that. But as far as the dirt going off of my property, county is very stringent on making sure that we have, and they said the best is a mulch berm, which we have a mulch, mulch berm, does a fantastic job. But would love to, to work with Mr. Hoffmeyer in, in any way and to make sure that we can do as much as we possibly can. Norway spruces or whatever the case would, would be.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Again?
Yes.
Got a question. You know, under permissive use is an eight-foot site-proof fence. And that was the buzzword that Michael Holbert mentioned. You, under the analysis you're proposing, is six foot. That's less than even for a permissive use. I'm against that. Again, I need, you're a man of your word, as you said, but the only way I could vote for this is some, some way or your, your word is putting up some type of tree buffer spruce to shield highway, which is not written in here in the analysis. On Highway Double D, you have the little white pines. They're not gonna do anything. The firehouse and the other side of the property. If you're agreeable to that.
I sure can add more trees. I have no problem in that. Right now, we have white pines that are in that area that you're talking about, that join the firehouse. Those are set at nine, nine feet apart. So, and, so from trunk to trunk is nine, nine feet apart. To me, it's always about having a healthy tree. And planting them too close, all of a sudden, you get to where it's unhealthy. But there's no doubt that behind in those gaps, if we wanted to put some Norway spruce, I have no problem in that. And if they grow as fast as what, and I know they are a fast-growing tree, I wouldn't have a problem with that either. And, and put those in, in between if, if need be.
And along Double D as well?
That is Double D.
Okay. Well, you meant the fire, yeah, I thought you were talking about the fire.
Yeah, between my property and the firehouse would be the double, Double D side?
No, the Double D is actually on Double D Road, where you have the entrance.
Oh, that's Highway D.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's all right.
Too late.
Nope, that's all right.
And I live out there.
Right.
Yeah, along Highway D.
I, I can put some, something there also. It is one that we want a healthy, something that is healthy. What I would, what I'd love to propose is something to where if we would, you know, the county makes us put in so much, there's so much right-of-way. And if I am correct, is that 100-foot right-of-way? Do you know, Ellie?
Well, actually, it's MoDOT that has the right-of-way on that.
Yeah, it's either, it's either 100-foot road right-of-way or 120. I'm not sure what the long-range plan of what they make me stay back.
Okay, well, actually, MoDOT doesn't want us to have you dedicate anything. Structure-wise, we would look at that. But anything that's, you know, considered temporary in nature, not foundation.
Right. Let me...
Right, right, the thoroughfare, oh, the future thoroughfare plan.
Yeah, future thoroughfare is usually that is, I think that's a hundred...
Probably 120, 120.
It's either 100 or 120. And then what happens is that then my setback of a 25-foot berm that we put in goes in place. In this area, it's gonna be a long time before MoDOT uses 120 feet through that particular area. I would, as far as on those trees, as long as I can plant them on MoDOT property, it's, it's my property. However, it's, it's in the MoDOT right-of-way area, future plans. By the time they would need to use it, the white pines are big and all the other ones are, are big.
Well, after the meeting, I'll show you photos exactly that it does not form the buffer. Just, and that's my problem. Also, also on Z, you have chain-linked fence. Is that what you're proposing on this? Because so we don't have a site plan? Are we putting fence, chain-linked fence?
That is correct. That should be noted on, on your, in your packet.
I didn't see chain-linked fence. Maybe I'm missing something.
Well, I think it should be. And I don't have it in front of me, but I believe...
Well, that even calls for more of a buffering, yeah.
To answer your question, yes. That would be, that is correct.
And what about the eight-foot site-proof fence?
You know what? I'm not a, I'm not a proponent of an eight-foot one for, for several reasons. If, if somebody, there's a few things. The taller you go, the bigger your poles have to be because you do have wind. And, and, and my guy that does all my fencing, he's expensive, but he's great. He does a great job at it. Always recommends the six-foot. And the more, if you're trying to do some kind of a site-proof and you're, and you're doing anything with putting slats in a fence, those are, the high winds will bend that right over. Unless you start really beefing up the, the poles. I wouldn't be a proponent of an eight-foot. I don't think that it's going to help. That's my opinion.
How high is a RV?
Typically, an RV, if it's, if it's a Class A RV, you're roughly gonna be about 12 feet tall. If it's a, if it's a pop-up camper, you're gonna be four and a half feet tall.
Because at, at least this afternoon, you had some Class A RVs totally visible. I mean, those, gonna be 20 years before you can buffer that.
They can't fit 12-foot beds.
No, I'm saying, I think the spruces are the answer.
I think he's agreeing to do that.
Yeah. I have no problem in that.
Yeah.
No, no problem.
And I'd like to meet with you. I'll show you.
You know what? Two heads are better than one. I'm always willing to meet.
Gary has a lot of time.
So, hey, I have a few questions too, if you're...
Hey, I was working seven days a week.
Any other questions?
I do. We went home tonight.
Yes.
Are there any operational hours on this? Or can people just come and go all?
They can go in. All of my facilities are all 24/7. However, I will tell you that I wish I could say that these people buy these things and use them all the time. But I'll tell you that they don't go into them very, very often. Not near as much as one would assume that people would use them.
Do you have? Go ahead, sorry. The septic system on that one property, that's less than three acres. How is that gonna work? Residential property, that's less than three acres. And where was the septic field gonna be? The, it looks like the septic system's right at the, I guess that's the east side of the property there?
That is correct.
Where's the field gonna be?
You know what? The thing works perfect right now, so I don't know exa, you know?
I mean, how will that, I mean, with it being under three acres, what you're really wanting to is a variance for the, for the septic system too, correct?
It's all about percolation. And right now, the, the people have lived there 30-plus years. I think they're the people that bought it. However, the, the mom and dad died, but the son that I'm renting to is, is still living there. We don't have any. And the county is, is always, if I've got a problem on a, on a particular piece and my sewer's not working, Sandy Mae's all over me, guys. It's, there's, there's not an issue out there. And, and she's a tough woman. She's very, she's very good at what she does.
On a, on an acquisition I worked on a few years ago, on Bates Road, when the amount was acquired, the people had a septic system that no longer met county codes. And the entire system had to be replaced.
At that time, I'd probably tear the house down. I would be coming back in to tear the house down because it's, the house isn't worth, worth that much to me. I will tell you that I rented out for 350 bucks. The, the gentleman that, that lives there, I think he needs a little help. And I think that's a very fair price for something that, that I think the guy needs help.
And then one other thing was, what about the retention?
I'm sorry.
Retention?
Retention is, is definitely something that we go through. The retention, just for, for this instance here. Everything would drain towards the north.
Yeah.
East, northeast. And, and that's where the retention would be at.
It's on the drawing.
Yeah, I thought, I couldn't quite read it. It's pretty small. Yeah.
One comment that Gene men, mentioned. I've driven by a lot of your places. From the road, you can't see it, but he was concerned about construction trailers. I've never seen any because I can't see. Inside your property, do you have a lot of that?
Construction trailers?
Yeah.
No.
The contractors where they're parking them, pick them up in the morning and bring them back.
We have like a tractor trailer you're talking about? We have zero tractor trailers. I'm sorry. Dump trucks are, are going in there at this particular...
For storage.
No, for storage. Oh, for storage, no.
What's Gene mentioned, yeah.
No, we just, you're talking about big trucks for dump trucks or whatever?
Construction equipment.
Very, very, no, no, no constr... And to be quite honest with you, one of the things that I tell my secretary, "Hey, if they're using these every day, don't rent them." I don't wanna be having, I don't wanna have, if somebody's using something every day, the odds of them hitting somebody else go up drastically. I wanna protect the people that, that are in my facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Keven. Close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission. Any discussion, comments, question of staff?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm not opposed to it. It looks like it's fine. But I'd like to personally see a, a fully-developed site plan before voting on it. Okay. That I mean, just based on that, I'll have to... Is that correct? I mean, they, they aren't required to have an in-depth...
Because it goes before the county staff. At this point, we don't get to see it again, right? Yeah.
Yeah, but I, if, if you're trying to reach out for a process where you could get a site plan, I guess you could table this to next month and ask Jerry to come back with one.
Are you close enough to, are you, are you ready to bring in a, or detailed site plan?
I am not. And the, and the one of the things is, is like Ellie had mentioned, as far as it can be very costly to have, to do a total site plan.
We're televised.
Yep.
And like Ellie said, it can be very expensive to have a full, full site plan done. And at the same time, it's, it's pretty stringent to get through the county to, to get something that would be approved.
We've had site plans even sketched, not formally with an architect, but it gives us, gives us a lot of information what's, with the placement and so forth and so on.
That should be in the packet, guys. That should be, and it's, to be quite honest with you, it's a lot more detailed than what I ever brought in before.
Jerry, they're telling me your site plan that needs to be approved is gonna have to be a cut above what you've submitted for tonight's discussion.
Oh, absolutely. And when...
So, so it seems to me you're gonna spend the money sooner or later anyhow. I guess what, what, I'm getting the impression that at least Commissioner Cleary would like to see that.
I won't, if, if they vote me down, I'm not spending the money.
No, 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 no. I think what, what the process they're reaching out for is, put the, put this, this application for the conditional, put the conditional use permit application over the next, to June. And between now and June, come in with the site plan that eventually you're gonna have to have anyhow.
That, that's not what I'm wanting to, to do. As far as, and here's the reason why, is that I'm not trying to hide anything whatsoever. But I think that's pretty detailed of what they have so far. And unless there's something that you, let's ask the questions. Let's figure out... And, uh, unless there's something that you, let's ask the questions, let's figure out what exactly you're looking for, and we'll, you know, ask that question, and I'll definitely give you a 100% answer.
No offense, but-
Sure.
This really isn't that detailed. It's hard to read, that by the time we got it, it is-
That's pretty small.
It's pretty small.
What I brought in to Ellie was a, a big one.
All right.
And I apologize, I should've, uh, next time.
We need to start getting bigger ones. This is not adequate for us to review the preliminary site plan.
Sorry.
No, that's all right, we, we don't have the resources to print off.
Really?
We can print till 11 by 17.
We have a print shop, we have a print shop, we can make whatever we, we need, and I'll make sure you have the resources to do that. Um, we have printers that will print bigger than this. I guarantee it.
Well, nothing else we should have up here, too.
Right. Um, so-
I will bring one of the, a bigger one for the planning and, or for the county council.
This is a habitual thing that happens, that I can't read any of this stuff that's on here. I don't know what it says under developer notes. Um, and the, there's, there's too many, there's just things on here that, that are impossible to read, so-
Can you get, can you get several copies of that, dude?
I'll, I'll get a bigger one for the county council meeting that you'll be at also.
Yeah, and, and that's fine.
I apologize for not, uh, you're, yeah, if you can't read them, you can't read them.
I think it just makes us feel more comfortable if we have something that we have a better feeling-
Sure.
-of what the conditional, um, the concept plan is, and then we'll let staff put the details to it, but this is, is hard to, to, to really get a gist of it.
Sorry about that, I will, I will bring one to the county council meeting that would be-
I think that's what we're asking for is, is, you know, something that we have a better feel for what, what you're proposing.
Sure.
Uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, I know I'm gonna slow you down by month, and I, I apologize for that, but we only, we only meet once a month. I'd really like to see something that, uh, gives us a better definition of what you're gonna be doing.
Can I describe that? Uh, you're right, I'd, I would just as soon not give up that month.
Right.
Um, I will tell you that, uh, anytime I'm building these, you wanna build them in the, in the fall time of the year, you always get a drier period. Um, and this is the timing of the year, the, where I'm going to, if I postponed it another month, then I'll be getting into the winter time. That's not a good time to be putting all this stuff in, in, and I, yeah, it, it's gonna be, uh, it would be very similar to the other ones. Uh, I do have to go through everything that the county is, uh, that makes you, the jumping through hoops, but I would rather not miss that month.
I'm willing to say to, to the rest of the commission, I'm willing to go ahead and approve this with the, the concept plan that we have before us, knowing, um, in this case, the, the, the history of the applicant, and also the faith that I have in our, our staff, they've heard what we want, um, and quite frankly, if we don't have it, I don't, this board doesn't, but I guess I bite at the apple anyway when it comes to the, to the council. So, that's, that's my recommendation. If, if the rest of the, of the commission is, is acceptable to that, I'll go ahead and make a, a motion for, for approval, um, as, as submitted.
A second. Mr. Setley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Going by Mr. Keven's word, yes.
Okay, I vote yes, Mr. Clary.
Yeah, I mean, the, I, I think what Mike said is, we've got a past history of, of him doing good jobs. I, I think that that would be a yes, but I do think that in the future, if there's ones, I think we need to be adamant that we have the site plan before.
Yeah.
Or that is a yes, Mr. Littler?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Klinghammer?
Yes. We can always put it-
That is nine to zero. Thank you. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is continued business, which was a discussion, uh, and the adoption of rules and procedures for the commission. Uh, the chair is asking that that be, uh, continued till next month, uh, because, uh, Assistant County Councilor Rourke was not able to be with us this evening.
Sounds good to me.
Staff, have any other business? Okay, next, approval of the minutes from the April 18th, 2018 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Um, motion to adjourn.
Go vote.
All those in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
By the way, nice minutes.